Okay, um, so we'd start with public comments.
Roll call.
Roll call. Okay, yeah, I knew I knew I should print the top of the agenda. Now, Lonnie, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Director Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Robert Uten.
Here, I guess I could have also looked at the screen. Okay, now now do we go to public comments?
Yes, sir, and I believe Mr. Jim Mosher has his hand raised to make public comment, please.
Uh, Jim, would you go forward, please?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Uten. This is Jim Mosher. As I think most of you know, I live in a part of the district where the ratepayers receive sewer service only. So I listen to your discussions here about solid waste with interest, but kind of with only half an ear. And I thought you might be interested to know that the City of Newport Beach, which is the agency through which I receive my CRNR residential trash service is in the process of renegotiating their contract with CRNR. The city council in Newport Beach held a study session about this on November twenty fourth. And their staff will be bringing back to them either a new contract, well, they will be bringing back to them a new contract on January twenty six for the city council either to accept or to decide to go out to bid. Uh, what is interesting, and what I thought you would find interesting is that the City of Newport Beach currently has a two cart trash system with what everybody has a mixed waste cart. Some people voluntarily have a recyclables cart. At the study session, CRNR claimed that the City of Newport Beach was only achieving forty nine percent diversion with that two cart system, and the only way it could get to even fifty percent was by switching to a three cart system with a mandatory mixed waste, recyclables and organics cart. This seemed difficult to reconcile with claims I've heard from CRNR here that this district is already exceeding sixty percent with a two cart system. The study session minutes in Newport Beach say that the state now actually requires all municipalities to have a three cart system, although when I reviewed the video, which you can as well, it was a little more nuanced than that. But Dean Ruffridge from CRNR did say that his company is phasing out all two cart systems, and they will require three carts everywhere, and he also mentioned that he is in discussion with this district to get to seventy five percent landfill diversion by proposing to burn some part of the mixed waste at the cement plant in Victorville. So I was interested to hear those things, and I thought you would because I don't recall discussion here of CRNR requiring this district to go to a three cart system or about burning the mixed waste at a cement plant in Victorville, but perhaps I wasn't listening carefully enough. Thank you.
Well, I think I think we've discussed the latter, uh, and and staff maybe, uh, are you is staff Scott discussing uh these premises with CRNR?
Do you want me to comment on Mr. Mosher's comments?
If it's appropriate.
Sure, um, we have had that discussion with CRNR about the three cart system. They have approached us um about going to the three cart system, which on on one hand, uh, we were a bit disappointed. Um, because you know, for forever, uh, CNR said the two cart system is the way of the future. And this is what everyone's going to go to. Well, apparently that's not the case. Um, we had that discussion. We know they're in negotiations with the City of Newport Beach. Um, right now, Nabil and I are discussing if we if we bring that to the board, you know, what kind of outreach would that require? Because everyone's so used to the two card system, and we know a lot of people like that two card system. Uh, we probably have to do the similar kind of outreach like we did with the organics program. Um, so we're still we're still in discussion with with um CRNR, then we'll we'll bring it back to the board for further discussion and direction on where you want to go on a three card system. Um, as far as um burning um plastics or waste, uh, yes, we've had some preliminary discussion with CRNR on that, and you might recall that is one of our strategic goal. We did identify that in our strategic plan to look into that and bring it back to the board for discussion. Um, so we we've had that discussion before in the past, and we plan on bringing that to the board here in the near future.
Thank you, Scott.
Uh, this month. I'm sorry, Bob. This is Mike. Can I make a quick comment on that?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know if you recall, but several months ago, maybe six months ago, we had a chance to look at CRNR's annual report. And I remember this guy, I remember bringing up uh the incinerators in the program, the incinerator programs that yeah, uses, you know, I had brought that up, and I know staff had been looking at it. In the meantime, I had talked to a representative from the Air Quality Management Control District out in Victorville. Uh, she actually sits on the Board of SDRMA with me, so I I've opened some just kind of preliminary discussions. They AQMD seems to like that process. So I'm glad to hear that staff is looking at that, and it may be part of that wave of the future that that solid waste haulers are looking at.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that are burned with um when when they make cement. A lot of different trash items and and or other ingredients, uh, be because it's such a high temperature that um, it virtually destroys whatever is is in there, but um, be be that as it may. Uh, can we go on to the next item?
Yes, yes.
Uh, and 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 in fact, we are uh or were we were um recycling at um about sixty two percent prior to the pandemic. Um, we've had trouble achieving that um since the pandemic, and and we did achieve it because we instituted the organics program. Um, and 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 now I'll be quiet, and we'll go on to the next 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 uh item, which is um.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I, before you move forward, I just had a question of uh Scott real quickly, um, if that's okay?
Sure.
Uh, Scott, you'd mentioned, uh, you know, Newport is looking at this, uh, obviously currently, and you'd said we you're in uh discussions with CRNR. Uh, do you have a timeframe for this board when some of those discussions might be brought forth?
You know, it's 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 just around the corner. Uh, we're we're looking probably January, February.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Um, um, the next item is receive and file the twenty twenty certified election results.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President and members of the board. Before you are the certified election results from the County Register of Voters Office, which resulted in the successful election of Director Brett Echols to Division Number Two and the reelection of Director Art Perry, who represents Division Four. So we congratulations to our two directors, and if there are any questions, I am available, but this item is just a receive and file.
Are there any questions from the board?
No, congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President, I believe Mr. Jim Mosher has his hand raised to make comment.
Okay, get Jim, Jim, can you put put yourself on there so we can see you, see you?
Yes.
Oh, that's no, okay, uh, Mr. Moser.
Yes, I I just had a brief comment about this item that I thought might be of interest to you, and then I'll probably be quiet for the rest of your meeting. Uh, the staff report is showing the number of votes cast for the two candidates. One thing I'm always interested in is people go down the ballot, they tend to lose interest in voting even on the down ballot items, including things like council races and uh special districts. So I was surprised, and perhaps you would be too, that in Division Two, the total number of ballots cast was fourteen thousand, and of those twelve thousand seven hundred participated in voting. So that's ninety one percent of the people who cast a ballot in Division Two had enough interest to vote in the CMSD race, and in Division Four, eighty seven percent of the voters voted on the sanitary district race, which is actually higher than the percentages of people who voted on the council races in Newport Beach. So I was very surprised to see voters interested in who was going to serve them on the district board. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, any discussion with? I I would like to ask legal counsel about, you know, what is appropriate for us to discuss um speakers' comments? Is Alan there?
No, he's not at a study session.
Okay, well, ma- maybe that'll be a future um discussion item. Because I've been in, well, that that'll that that will be my uh request in a future item.
Okay.
Okay, quarterly legislative report. That be you, Gina?
Yes, that is me. Good morning, members of the board. And before I begin my report today, I just wanted to provide a little bit of history um about how we do our quarterly legislative report. Um, so typically, I will present a list of state and congressional bills with summary and analysis. And those bills typically um are gathered through various sources, including agencies that the district is a part of, such as the California Special Districts Association, um, as well as uh the state CalRecycle. Um, I get some bills from the county, Orange County Waste and Recycling, and California Association of Sanitation Agencies, as well as environmental groups like Californians Against Waste. And so just to describe where uh the bills come from and how we put it together. As stated in the report, the board approved giving authority to the board president to write support or opposition letters on behalf of the district as long as that position has already been taken by an agency that the district is a member of. So that would be an agency like California Special Districts Association. Um, so just wanted to provide a little bit of background there, and then um I wanted to mention during my last report, I presented a list of bills that were passed by the state legislature, but were pending the governor's action. And so in today's report, I've updated our list of bills to reflect the governor's action, and I'll provide a brief overview of some of the notable bills. So starting with AB six eighty five, this is a bill significant um to employers related to COVID nineteen. This bill authorizes the Division of Occupational Safety and Health to halt operations and entry to a place of employment if the employees are exposed to a risk of COVID nineteen illness. There is an exception to this if the employer performs critical government functions that are considered essential to public health and safety. So that would include uh water and wastewater staff, such as ours. Um, it also establishes a notification requirement for employers whose workers have been exposed to COVID nineteen. Um, and it includes also notification of sick leave options and the cleaning and disinfection plan. Um, and then lastly, it also requires employers to notify their local health authority if more than three employees are infected with COVID nineteen. Um, next, we have AB nine nine two. This is another bill that we've been following that has impacts on elected officials like yourselves. So this bill is intended to clarify how the Brown Act views communications by elected officials on social media. So specifically, the bill allows members of a governing body to answer questions um to provide information to the public or to request feedback from the public regarding agency matters. This is permitted as long as members don't discuss agency matters amongst themselves, and as long as one member does not directly respond to another member in a discussion about agency matters. So for example, um, if one director creates a Facebook post about district, um, about a district program, if members of the public respond or comment on the post, that same director can engage in discussion with uh within the comments. However, if another director should come, uh, if another director comments on that post, that is not permitted under this bill. So even commenting with things like emojis, like a thumbs up or heart, um, that can be considered discussion. So if you're showing support or favor for um what another director has posted. And the next bill we have is AB nineteen forty seven. This is a labor bill that was passed that simply extends the statute of limitations for an employee to file a worker retaliation claim from six months to one year. And it also allows for employees to receive attorneys' fees if they prevail in court for that claim. Uh, another bill we have is AB twenty one oh seven. This is a bill that was supported by CSDA, and it reauthorizes an expired statute that allows special districts to issue securitized limited obligation notes for the acquisition or improvement of land, facilities, or equipment. These notes mature within ten years, and they can be issued up to a cumulative two million dollars. And so essentially, this bill would create a financial tool for special districts to finance projects through securitized debt. Um, as I mentioned, it was a statute that had expired, so it's just being reauthorized. Um, next is SB eleven fifty nine. This is another COVID nineteen related bill that expands the definition of injury for workers' compensation purposes. Um, it it will include illness or death resulting from COVID nineteen under that definition of injury. It establishes a presumption that COVID nineteen illness is compensable if there is an outbreak of five percent or more of employees. And then lastly, we have SB thirteen eighty three, which expands the California Rights, uh, California Family Rights Act to provide unpaid protective leave for up to twelve work weeks during any twelve month period to bond with a new child, care for family, or attend to a call of active duty. This bill requires these protections for smaller employees, or sorry, smaller employers with five or more employees. Previously, these protections only apply to employers with fifty or more employees. So many of the the bills that the district was following did not pass. And as we discussed during my last report, several of these bills were related to the use of emergency generators during public safety power shut offs. Um, so that was unfortunate that those didn't move forward. Um, but a couple other bills that didn't pass include AB fifteen sixty seven, which would have required various state agencies to work together to create a scoping plan for the state's organic waste and air quality goals. Um, AB sixteen seventy two, you might remember, um, it sought to require sanitary white products to be labeled do not flush. Uh, that one did not pass, unfortunately. AB eighteen forty four would have expanded paid sick leave conditions to include behavioral health, such as mental health and substance abuse issues. And then lastly, AB thirty thirty um would have created a state goal to protect thirty percent of state land and waters by twenty thirty. That also did not pass. Um, so uh included in my report are also four congressional bills um related to special district COVID nineteen relief funding and plastic waste reduction. Um, none of these bills have seen any movement so far, so it's unlikely that they'll pass in the next in the next month, but I will continue to monitor them since they are related to the the district. Um, and then I also wanted to mention that we do have a new state Senator Dave Min. Um, and then our Assemblywoman Cotty Petrinoris was reelected. We also have a new congressional representative, Michelle Steele, so we look forward to working with them. Um, and that concludes my report today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, does the board have any questions?
Yeah, I I do, Bob. This is Mike. Gina?
Yeah.
Um, on AB twenty one eighty two, the pollution, you know, from the generators.
Yes.
We have, and I'm I'm sure if you can answer this, but I'll throw it at you anyway. So so AQMD puts certain requirements on us on what we can discharge into the air from our generators, right?
Right.
At some point, if we exceed those limitations, does that mean we have to shut the generators off?
Um, that's a good question. I I would have to check with Steve. I'm not actually sure what enforcement actions they take. Um, I I know they do some um unannounced inspections and things like that, but I can check with Steve to find out if they've ever.
It's just a curiosity, and Scott, maybe you know, I mean, if if we have generators that are polluting, does the AQMD say cut them off, which could lead to a potential SSO, right?
Yeah, no, there there are certain um um time limits. You can you can have a um a diesel generator running. Um, and and I believe AQMD understands, you know, under under emergencies, you know, those don't really apply. So like, we have a long term power outage, and we have to run a diesel generator. You know, they're not gonna, they're not gonna come down and find the district on that because it's a health and safety issue on on the sewer side. Um, but they they do have uh limits, I think, how how long you can um 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 exercise your generators, you know, how long you have to exercise them. They do have some limits on that, but uh other than that, as long as as long as we're keeping our our regular PMs on our generators, um, which we which we do, um, and we we stay within that permit as far as limiting the the amount of hours are on during exercising, they they really um they're fine with uh how we use our generators.
Okay, then. Yeah, they might they do. I want to second that. They do recognize that, you know, in emergencies, uh, um, we we probably couldn't exceed the permit limits. I think probably what we should do is uh maybe have an item on the study session sometime in the future that tells us what those time limits are. Um, you know, to further explain what Scott or the details of what Scott said.
Okay, uh, you know, the other concern there is we lend those generators out to other groups to use. Do those requirements go away when we lend them to someone else, or could there? I think we need to look at that as well.
Yeah.
Make sure we're not violating anything there.
I don't believe we're violating, well, I I think we're aware of that, staff is aware of that, but I but it's a good question that we um probably should verify. So the the study.
Would you expect a bad question from me, Bob? Pardon? Would you expect a bad question from me?
Oh, no, no. I, I, yeah, yeah, to a degree.
Yeah, really. And and then the last, the last comment I'm gonna make, uh, Gina, on SB eleven fifty nine, the one that was passed on the workers' comp and COVID. Um, can we keep an eye on, if you see anything that comes up on that? Uh, what what's gonna happen is with all those stay at home and the work from home situations, there could be a potential explosion um on workers who are working at home that contract COVID, putting it back on the workers' comp system. And that could drastically affect our ability and our rates. So just if you see anything on that, I'd be, I'd appreciate anything that you that you come across.
All right, I'll keep an eye on it.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks, Bob.
You're welcome.
Hey, Bob, I have a question.
Bob?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Get back to the generators. I'd like I'd like to think, put that on the study session to find out the length of time that the that we're required to stop the generators at what point? Because I know, like Mike said, we lend them out, and we never have heard that before about how long they can run. For example, the fish fry. Fish fry, they only run from dark, say, six o'clock or seven o'clock at night until in the morning. Is is a twelve hour time violating the the regulations? That's, I just need to, I'd like to find that out.
Yeah, no, I think I think we ought to know, it it's it's an important item to know.
Yes.
And, you know, it may may well affect that program, um, but there are, we we have a substantial number of generators. And and so, but we do need to work within the the permit limits.
Right. I think we, I think they only leave one on at night. I mean, past practice for the fish fry.
Yeah.
For, but I and I I'm not even sure how long that runs, but just, and and I know the city does, the city runs their generators for their lights also at the that ones we borrow for the fish fry.
Yeah, portable generators have a sizable number of uh AQMD permit limitations, um.
That would just be interesting for us to know because we do lend them out.
Yeah, well, yeah, um. Good, good point. Um, any other directors' comments? Uh, then let's move on to the next item, which is um the pharmaceutical and sharps program. Um, Nabilia, are you going to give this presentation? It's a general report.
Yes, I will.
And if if before Nabilah starts, uh, Lonnie, can you put the staff report up, please? Because I think Nabilah has some graphs that's can be showed to the public.
Are you unable to see the?
Yeah, staff report, no, I I don't see it. Does anyone else see the staff report? Yeah, it's not up. It's it's it's.
Huh, okay.
No one can see it.
Let me try it again. Hold on.
Oh, yeah, there we go. Okay.
If you scroll down a little bit where the graphs are, there you go. Keep going. There you go. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Nabilah, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Board of Directors. The District Sharps and Pharmaceutical Waste Collection Program use um is used to collect sharps and pharmaceuticals and properly disposes of them for residents free of charge. The program ensures proper disposal of discarded needles and other sharps to prevent health risks to the public as well as wastewater and solid waste workers. Um, the program was launched in fiscal year twenty ten, twenty eleven, and over the last ten years, various locations have been used as collection sites. Prior to fiscal year seventeen eighteen, various local pharmacies served as as disposal sites and hosted both a pharmaceutical and sharps collection box. That same fiscal year, the California State Board of Pharmacy added additional requirements for collecting pharmaceutical waste from commercial pharmacies. And it added significantly more track tracking on behalf of the pharmacy, which made it difficult for their employees to continue hosting the drop boxes. The added requirements are only applicable if the drop box is located in the pharmacy, and they do not apply to other locations. Due to these new restrictions, um, the pharmacy drop boxes were removed from three pharmacies, and one was placed at CMSD headquarters. The district went from offering four disposable locations to only to the senior center, the senior center and CMSD headquarters. The senior center drop box is not advertised because of the location of the senior center staff was um was not okay with advertising just because of the amount of home of the homeless population, so they did not want people randomly coming into the senior center. The senior center drop box only services the senior center that use the senior center. Uh, fiscal year, since fiscal year seventeen eighteen, CMSD staff has worked on promoting the Sharps and Pharmaceutical Program to let residents know of the new locations and proper disposal options. CMSD has advertised the program on CMSD website, social media platforms, ads in the Costa Mesa Recreation Guide, and Newport Mesa State of the District Breakfast. Even with the additional promotion and advertisement of the programs, collection levels of the sharps and pharmaceutical waste has significantly decreased. The historical trend illustrated below uh leads staff to believe that the participating pharmacies in the beginning of the program um were using the drop box to use to dispose of their expired and and unused medication, and it was not reflective of the material collected from residents. Uh, the graph below the collection graph is a program cost per fiscal year.
Hmm.
A report of these programs was presented to the Citizen Advisory Committee on September ninth, and at that meeting, district staff requested that the CAC consider discontinuing the program and make a formal recommendation to the Board of Directors. The CAC director staff to gather data on the city or of origin for drop box users and report and report back to the CAC. At the moment, um, when residents come and drop off materials, CMSD is not asking where they're from. We just let them use the drop box because of the safety disposal. Um, we don't want the sharps and medication to end up in the carts or out in the waste stream, in the water stream. Um, based on the CAC's recommendation, staff has created a sign in sheet, and now those stopping by to use the drop boxes are asked to disclose the city where they live in. Since the sign in sheet was implemented, twenty five individuals have dropped off sharps, and thirteen of them have been individuals from other cities, or fifty two percent. For comparison, fifteen individuals have used the pharmaceutical drop box, and three have been from other cities, or twenty three percent. CMSD staff will continue to monitor these programs and bring this item back to the Board of Directors at a later time with more information. Currently, ratepayer money is being used to fund both of these programs, and staff does not believe that it's being fully utilized by CMSD residents. Uh, staff continues to believe that the program should be. Staff continues to believe that the program should be discontinued as there are several several local options for the safe disposal of these materials. For pharmaceutical waste, there is a drop box at the Walgreens Pharmacy on Superior Street in Costa Mesa. And additionally, the D E A hosts two national collection days in partnership with local police departments. These events happen in April and October of every year. And residents are able to dispose of controlled substances at these events. For sharps disposal, residents can schedule, solid waste customers can schedule a free door to door household hazardous waste pickup, pick up their sharps. And residents can also drop off their sharps in a sealed container at any of the four permanent county household hazardous waste facilities. The closest ones to Costa Mesa are in Irvine and Huntington Beach. C M S D would continue to advertise and bring awareness to the need for proper disposal of these items as well as promote the proper ways to do it. This concludes my report. I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do any of the directors have questions?
I do. I I wasn't aware that we were that the C A C has asked us to drop the program. I'm I'm not sure I'm up with that idea. I think after the COVID is over, things may get a little better and maybe we can find a couple other locations that would be sufficient to take care of it. And he's I I like the program. I think we should not drop it, but keep it in limbo right now as it is.
Director Perry, I I don't believe the C A C asked for that. I believe staff asked the C A C to recommend that.
I was I, the way I took it is that that was their recommendation, but you'd make, you can ask, you know.
Nabilah, would you explain that, please?
Yes, so looking at the participation rate of the program, staff did staff did go to the C A C for a recommendation to end the program. The C A C did not make it. Did not make the recommendation to the Board of Directors. They wanted staff to get more information.
Yeah, that's better. I like that better. But I I really don't want to stop the program until things get better and we can have more discussion about it.
Do any other directors have comments?
Mr. Vice President, I have one.
I'll go ahead, Brett.
Just following on Director Perry's comment, some of the more detailed tracking that you've done has only been during COVID. A lot of the tracking of city location, residents, things like that, that's only happened, say, the last six months. Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
Okay, I, you know, I I would like to see more information. You know, when COVID and some normalcy returns to the community to see where those numbers either spike, go down, stay the same. You know, I'd lean towards that direction.
Hi, any other directors?
I have a comment.
Director Schaefer?
Thank you.
Secretary.
Whatever. I I would like to see this go on a study session in February to give it a fair shake. And some of us might have comments on this. You know, maybe where we could even have places for this to go. You know, as far as at one time we had a lot of pharmacies that that kind of fell by the wayside. But there's other places we could have it too. And I I think in all fairness, people do enjoy it and comment. But I can see the seniors not being able to have the senior center advertised. But we can do some advertising in other places. So anyway, I'd like to see us all comment in the study session.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Arlene.
No, I just meant in February, not January, because nothing's gonna be actually transpired then.
I would suggest, Mr. Vice President, maybe even wait a bit longer as as Director Echoes mentioned, you know, wait till the COVID dies down. I don't believe it's gonna die down in February. It's gonna probably be more like in in the summertime when we start seeing it dying down. So if that's okay with the board, I would wait a little bit longer to bring this item back. I also would suggest, as Nabilah mentioned, you know, we really have a great opportunity with the door to door H H W collection program. If we can really promote it through that program, I think we can get some large collection of sharps. And it's a lot easier for people. They just put it in front of their doors and and, you know, in the safe container in front of the doors and it's gone. You know, they don't have to transport it. I I think that could be a really good solution to help with our sharps program. But those are my, those are my comments and suggestions.
Any other director comments? I have some comments.
But, yeah, Bob, just one real quick question. Nabilah, you'd mentioned that there is this is being paid by rate payer funds. Can you remind us what the annual, or if you know it, the annual cost for the program is?
So the cost of the programs vary. We budget, this year we budgeted fifteen thousand for the pharmaceutical program and fourteen thousand for the sharps collection. So the program is through waste management. For the pharmaceutical, we pay a set fee when they come to empty the drop box plus a four eighty five per pound of pharmaceuticals collected. For the sharps collection, we pay a flat fee every time they empty the drop box regardless of how many pounds they collect.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
I I have I have several comments. The staff staff report says that there were considerable more tracking requirements. In in either now or in the future, I'd like to know what those were. Is that just a is? Because we went in just with a sign in sheet and we continued to accept them. And apparently that was met the state regulation.
Yeah, so the new regulations were applicable for commercial pharmacy. So in the past, White Front Pharmacy participated in our program. Ramsey Raxel. And there was one in Mesa Verde.
Stevens Pharmacy.
Yeah, Stevens Pharmacy also participated. So if the drop boxes were at a pharmacy, it required two or more employees to be present when the waste management was disposing of the material. And that also required that the pharmacy keep records of what was collected, so the type of medicine collected. So again, these drop boxes are paid for by C M S D, but just the staffing time it would take on behalf of the pharmacy to run these programs. The pharmacy was not okay with how much time it would take.
Okay, well, but we did, we we went in and to get the data we got, was that pre? Pre the, before these regulations or after the regulations? When we went in to determine whether there were local residents using them or 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 out of city residents?
Oh, no, that was just implemented September of this year. And it's just specifically for the drop boxes at C M S D headquarters. Do any tracking at the senior center or I run Ramsey Raxel.
Okay, yeah, I think, so we we're funded. Where we, the funds that are expended on this program come from the O C recycling grant?
No, they come from the solid waste annual fee to residents.
Do they, are they part of C R and R's program donations each year?
I believe Caitlin can speak a little more to how those ones are appropriated.
Well, we we can have that in the future, in the future staff report.
Okay, I will make sure to include that information.
You know, the our 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 mission is public health and safety, you know, and I and I think these the the safety requirements. You know, the the staff report says it did, it is to protect wastewater and solid waste workers. It's actually to prevent, to protect the environment. The these drugs when they're flushed down or pharmaceuticals when they're flushed down the toilet, go through the sewage treatment plant and and then end up in the in the ocean. And they're concentrated by the the Green Acres Project, which removes them. And, you know, so so these these drugs are increasingly important to the ocean environment. It, you know, I I I think this this does bear considerably more discussion. If you go on the Orange County website, you know, they have, they have more information and more potential disposal options. And then and from that, you know, you you can go to the the state websites to, you know, to further enhance why this is important to either the environment or the workers. I am, I'm I'm in concert with the rest of the directors that, you know, I think these are important programs. We have not had very much success in in the past getting information to residents or getting the residents to use the H H W household hazardous waste programs. Is Tripeppy, is Tripeppy focusing on assisting us in getting that information to the public?
Not at the moment. They're helping us build a base on social media and emails so we can inform residents better. But we do have a grant from Cal Recycle this year and next. And we have a couple thousand dollars to promote the door to door program. So I believe Gina will be advertising that now monthly on social media. And just reminding residents that sharps is one of the items that they can put up for collection along with paint and other household items.
So we have a grant from the state because they think this is important, an important, a very important issue. And, you know, I think that lends credence to all the other, the director's comments that we need with the state's money and and the local needs, the sewage treatment plant needs and and the trash workers needs, you know, to 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 make progress in this, to make progress in this arena. I I I I think all the directors have spoken to the same issue. So I'm looking forward to the the agenda report. And I and I think the sooner the better in that we can develop strategies. And I don't believe this is just a COVID related issue. I I believe it's been on the on the local, the regional and the state's concern list for for a very long time. And 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 we, I mean, somehow we need to do better. With either their guidance, especially with their money and anyway, I'm I'm blathering on. So I thi- I think, I think, you know, it'll it'll take a number of stabs at at doing this. Developing a strategy is is a long term process. And 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 we and just delaying it till after the the COVID issue is over. It's too too late in the in the project project. We we need to have developed these strategies or attempted to develop the strategies sooner sooner than later.
You know, I had another comment. I wondered how this affects our three, three time pickup for residents for the whatever they want to give compared to what we now need another pickup for this.
Arlene, I don't think, Director Schaefer, I don't think it has any impact on the the large, large item pickup. If if that's, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah, I was just wondering, you know, if if we're gonna separate both of them or see, in other words, we have right now the three, three time pickup that is allowed.
True. And, you know, that's, I believe that's a separate program, but and staff can clarify that in, you know, in when they come back with the next agenda report. So it's a good question.
Okay, thank you.
Any other directors' comments? If not, it looks like we're at oral communications and directors' comments. Are there any, are, do do any of the directors have comments, additional comments?
Mr. Vice President, I see that Mr. Mosher has his hand raised when it's appropriate.
Is this, is it appropriate? Is this an agendized item? It is. So Jim, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Vice President. Putin, the the comment was about the previous item about the sharps and pharmaceutical disposal.
Okay.
I I share your concern about the environmental importance of that. I had a question about the two two graphics that we saw. We'd have to scroll back up to see those again. They they seem to show the program falling off precipitously this last year. But I noticed from the legend at the bottom that those seem to be fiscal years. So it's showing it fell off in fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty one.
Right.
So is that fall off not only because of COVID, but because we're only five months into the fiscal year? And by the time the current fiscal year is ended, wouldn't those last data points go up? So the program has not fallen off quite so much as it would appear to be.
Yeah, so I I think it would have been appropriate to put dashed lines in there for that period of time because you're right, it is, it it does seem to indicate that these are annual data and there it is not. So the, you know, there there's no way to measure unless staff has a way to guesstimate where it might go. It it should be more better delineated. Sorry, anyway, can we go to oral communications and directors' comments? Do the directors have any closing communications or comments?
You did a good job, Bob.
Oh, and if not, then this meeting will is adjourned. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. It's a good discussion. Thank you. Thank you, staff, for bringing this, these items and allowing us to speak out on them. Thank you, sir.
Todd Haynes said to say hello.
Well, thank you. He's a former worker at Orange County Sand District with me.
Yeah, he's one of my customers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.